September 8, 2020, regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. We will be led in the invocation by Russell Miyahira. The invocation and I'll lead the pledge of allegiance. Okay? Mr. City Attorney, can you lead us in the invocation? I think there's problems with his audio. Fontre Norris, can you please lead us in the invocation today?
Yes, I can, Mayor. If everyone can bow their heads. Lord heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We say thank you for giving us the power to host this great meeting, to bring these great minds together, to come to one one straight narrow road to complete the tasks at hand. I pray that we have a good meeting and that we complete our task. Name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen. Can everyone please stand and face a flag that's in your location, please? Please place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of which stands indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you guys. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communications?
Yes, I can. During oral communications, speakers should have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Go ahead.
So we have one person calling right now by the name of Annika Stitch. Ms. Stitch, you have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm a long time South Bay resident whose family has owned property here for almost forty years. I'm calling with solidarity with the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance and South Bay Community Care Org. I'm calling to express that I deeply disgusted by the dehumanizing treatment that our houseless community faces at the hands of your officials. When you're facing a crisis like this, you need to think of long-term solutions, and sweeps are not a long-term solution. Some solutions that you could implement would be things like housing or shelter or services. So please understand that your constituents do not support these sweeps and that these sweeps are cruel and violent. You need to survey the people that are experiencing homelessness in Hawthorne and ask what they need. You need to see them as people. You need to do the work and stop the sweeps. I would also like to add that I support the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance to defund Hawthorne Police Department and invest those funds toward community improvement like services for unhoused residents. I would also like to acknowledge that Hawthorne was founded as a sun downtown, a whites-only settlement, and I believe that mentioning this is relevant historical context that can help us inform how do we stand in service to the members of this community in that we need to make sure that our actions do not, you know, mirror those of the past. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Next, please. Next, next we have Mr. Matt Zarro. Go ahead, Mr. Zarro.
Dear City Council, my name is Matt Zarro and I am a resident of Hawthorne. I'm calling today as a member of Street Watch LA who are calling on this council to suspend sweeps of unhoused residents of Hawthorne. We make these demands because the sweeps the city of Hawthorne have been doing are ineffective, unconstitutional, dangerous, and immoral. Sweeps are an act of forcing people who are unhoused to move from the place they have made shelter. The city of Hawthorne does this regularly to its unhoused citizens, performing two of these sweeps in the last two weeks and threatening a third just this weekend. Sweeps are completely ineffective at addressing the issues of homelessness. Your own homeless coordinator will tell you the same. They don't get people off the streets, they just cause them to shift around the margins of our city. Sweeps actually compound the problem. Destabilizing people who are already struggling makes it even more difficult to get them off the streets and thus keeps people on the streets longer. The kind of sweeps being done in Hawthorne are unconstitutional. They violate the Eighth Amendment of the US Constitution because Hawthorne has no shelters or legal places for unhoused people to be. It is considered cruel and unusual punishment to take it or arrest them for sleeping on public land when they have no alternatives. These sweeps are dangerous. They violate the CDC's COVID-19 recommendations to keep unhoused people sheltered in place during the pandemic. Additionally, we're in the middle of a historic heat wave. Forcing people out of shelter in a city that has zero cooling stations is deadly. Most importantly, sweeps are immoral. They are obviously cruel and show a complete lack of empathy, understanding, and compassion to people already suffering. As leaders, you each bear a special responsibility for the sinfulness of these sweeps. For Christians like myself, we are taught in the Gospel of Matthew that the way we treat the least of these is the way we treat Christ. Under your leadership, our city traumatizes Christ on a weekly basis. I am begging you tonight to lead the people of Hawthorne in showing love and compassion to our unhoused neighbors by suspending sweeps. Listen to your homeless coordinator and the other concerned citizens of Hawthorne. These sweeps are counterpart of this. Illegal, dangerous, and wrong. In your time, at the end of this meeting, pledge your support to end sweeps. Your silence will be considered as opposition. I join with the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance in their call for defunding the Hawthorne Police and reallocating these funds to needed services, including cooling stations, showers, and most importantly, housing for the unhoused. Finally, my friends Mike and Don are still on the streets tonight. Mike is dying of congestive heart disease. Their story has now been heard by over forty thousand people, many of whom were moved to actually help them by donating money. The city of Hawthorne has truly failed them, and our city should be ashamed to call itself the city of good neighbors. Shame on you, Mayor Vargas, and shame on each of the city council members. You have known about their condition for two months and have done nothing to help them. Strangers from around the world were willing to help when our own mayor and city representatives were not moving.
Thank you. The next are email messages that we received. Go ahead, sir.
Dear City Council, we are very well aware of the close relations the current mayor has with the Hawthorne Police Department. We received a clear message of the mayor's stance after seeing Hawthorne PD endorse his campaign. Regardless whether Alex Vargas loves PD or not, our marginalized communities will continue to push city council as a whole to defend PD. To defund PD, sorry. Our demands are for the people, not for the personal incentives of our local government. Your relations with the police department do not reflect the relations or experiences of the rest of us. Hence, as a community, we do not see HPD receiving more than fifty percent of the budget as fit. They already receive grants from the government and free toys from the military. Also, by removing some of the money coming from the city budget, maybe Hawthorne PD will better allocate grant funds within the department. As Hawthorne Abolition Alliance has been saying, defund PD. Instead, fund our most vulnerable areas such as mental health, food insecurity, houseless folks, marginalized youth, COVID-19 testing centers, and more. Additionally, on August twenty eighth, our community fridge was nearly taken down after code enforcement claimed that he had received several community complaints about the fridge. After listening to what had occurred, it was devastating to see how quick code enforcement was willing to shut down a fridge that was meant to support our people. As a community, we are urging you, especially the mayor, to meet with the organizers who are currently in contact with you to discuss why there were no prior warnings or citations, as there should have been. Best, Jaslyn from Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. The next one. In the interest of basic human rights, the city of Hawthorne must immediately suspend all sweeps by Hawthorne PD or by Hawthorne PD on homeless encampments. These sweeps are morally and fiscally irresponsible. They are always a public health hazard, even more so now that we are in the throes of a pandemic and are currently discouraged by the CDC. These sweeps are fundamentally cruel and are an act of violence against our unhoused neighbors, resulting in the destruction of their property, social support networks, and general physical and mental stability. They must stop immediately. I support the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance to defund the Hawthorne Police Department and invest those funds toward community improvements like services for unhoused residents. The next one. Hello, I was wondering if the council has plans to acknowledge the demands of the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. We refuse to be shrugged off. Our poor black residents are being harassed by Hawthorne PD and your silence is speaking volumes. We know that police do not reduce crime rates. That isn't my opinion, that is a fact. What we can do to reduce crime is invest in after-school programs, mental health resources, addiction resources, etc. East Hawthorne is inundated with liquor stores. How does it make sense to have more police presence and less addiction resources? Our communities are being criminalized, and since the council has not acknowledged our demands, I'd like to take this moment to speak on it. Number one, transparency. Police misconduct should be made available so that we can keep each other safe from cops who harass us. Donations the police make to council members and elected officials should also be made public. Number two, de-weaponization. There is no reason for the Hawthorne Police Department to have weapons that can harm and kill us. Please understand that some neighborhoods are policed more and more harshly than others. Number three, accountability. I think we can all agree that officers who commit these heinous acts shouldn't be cops. Why are police and committees filled with police in charge of accountability processes for officers who abuse their power? Number four, reinvest and reimagine. As previously stated, police do not reduce harm, and once again, that isn't my opinion, that is a fact. Harm reduction begins at prevention, not punishment. It makes no sense that more than fifty percent of the city budget goes toward police and very little goes to the resources residents actually need. Whether or not you agree with all the points mentioned or just some of the points, I think we can all agree that a conversation is needed and we'd be happy to present this information to you all. If folks could give space right now and right now to just acknowledge our demands and our variable concerns, I think that would restore our faith in a council that is actually here for us. Warmly, Byron Barahona.
Next one. I'm writing to request an end to homeless sweeps in our city until we can provide actual support for the unhoused in our community, sweeping them off. Sweeping them from the only shelter they have in the middle of this pandemic is cruel. So it's cutting off, so it's cutting off threatening the aid our community is creating for them and the rest of our city with our community bridge. We need to make, we need to make caring about our city the priority, not policing its residents. Please reconsider redirecting funds from the Hawthorne Police Department and through programs that support the people who love here. Dylan Little Hawthorne resident. Hello, we are South Bay Community Care, a mutual aid organization based in Hawthorne. Most of our members come from the east side of Hawthorne, which has majority black and brown residents. For this reason, we thought it was important to get them informed about who is running for city council and city mayor and what their plans are for our city. With this in mind, we created an election survey and sent it out to all of our candidates last week. We appreciate council member Montero and council hopeful Duran who have confirmed with us that they received their email and are committed to filling out the survey, but are extremely disappointed in everyone else who have essentially ignored our request. Like we mentioned, the folks we serve are majority black and brown, and if our communities are being ignored even before these folks are elected, we can't begin to imagine how they will be ignored if they are elected. We will send a final reminder email tonight and expect that our request will be completed by the due date, which is this Friday. Our communities cannot continue to go ignored. Feel free to reach out with any questions or concern. South Bay Community Care. Dear Hawthorne City Council, our community fridge was nearly taken down on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Code enforcement made a claim that he had received several community complaints about the fridge. Following what had occurred, it was very harmful and hurtful to see how swift code enforcement was to shut down a vital service to the community in a time where food insecurity is on the rise. The fridge is community care and should be treated as such. As a community, we are urging you to meet with the organizers that are in contact with you in order to discuss further details. The community needs to know why we were so quick to be threatened with no prior warnings or citations. We would like for officials to be held accountable and speak to the community. Best regards, Laineya.
Dear Hawthorne City Council, I'm a resident of the city of Hawthorne concerned with an event that took place on August twenty eighth when a mutual aid refrigerator set up and managed by the community was forcefully removed without reasonable notice or explanation. I'd like to better understand the reasons cited in the community complaints provided to code enforcements that resulted in the refrigerator's initial removal after only four days of operation. The apology issued by the city is insufficient. The community fridge has been a vital resource for numerous unhoused, housed, and housed neighbors to have access to basic food and cold water during the pandemic and record heat wave. And this effort has been achieved through mutual aid provided by fellow Hawthorne community members at no expense or liability to the city. I support the community fridge because access to food and water are basic human rights, and we are experiencing a time where more than ever people need to decide between paying for food or shelter because there has been no rent cancellation in our city. I personally provide donations regularly, sometimes several times a week. Through social media and community outreach, we are able to observe the constant turnover of products hour to hour that illustrate a clear need for this kind of aid and willingness to provide for each other. Based on the city's response to this effort, I'm concerned that there will be future actions by the city to remove their refrigerator and pantry resource and/or to prevent any additional sites of mutual aid from being created. I'm urging city council members to meet with the organizers to discuss the events that took place and any concern about the future operation of this invaluable resource. It is shocking and disheartening to have learned that this resource was so quickly destroyed, breaking the trust of the public and wasting resources that could have helped keep people alive and unhealthy. Please consider this request to meet with the fridge organizers to explain and ensure that it will not happen again. I'm also concerned about the street sweeps of unhoused people which directly contradict CDC COVID-19 guidelines. These kinds of sweeps are further disenfranchising unhoused communities by destroying communication and support lines and access to known resources and putting them at increased risk of contracting COVID. Sweeps also reduce the autonomy of unhoused communities by directing them to strict shelters and creating additional opportunities for incidents of violence by law enforcement inserting them in situations that often actually require mental health professionals and not armed officers prepared to intervene with force. In addition, the city of Hawthorne has no shelters for these people to be directed to and no legal place to sleep. So removing folks trying to survive in public places is a direct act of violence and is unconstitutional. What happens to the people who are reported as unhoused using council member Alad's homeless service request form? The Hawthorne Police Department receives at least fifty percent of the city's entire budget, which is outrageous and unacceptable when there are citizens struggling. That's three minutes. That was from Sarah Panoni. Next. Hello, my name is Uma. I'm a lifelong resident of the South Bay and I'm commenting today to call on the city of Hawthorne to immediately suspend all sweeps of Hawthorne PD of our unhoused neighbors. These sweeps are direct violation of CDC protocols as individual shelters are not available, encampments are not to be destroyed. Furthermore, there is no legal place for our unhoused neighbors to sleep, so removing them from sleeping on public property is unconstitutional. For these reasons, along with the fact that these sweeps are inherently cruel, a cruel act of violence, I call upon the city of Hawthorne to end such sweeps immediately. Thank you for your time. I am demanding that the city of Hawthorne immediately halt all sweeps of unhoused folks. I'm also demanding the city to fund the Hawthorne Police Department and divert these funds into services that support members of the community, including unhoused folks. I am appalled to know that the city of Hawthorne is conducting sweeps, displacing unhoused folks further destabilizes individuals and communities who rely on social support and necessary services. Being forced to relocate and having possessions destroyed by government agencies is inhumane and accomplishes nothing. Not only are these sweeps cruel, and they also offer no alternatives. There are no shelters in the city of Hawthorne and no legal places to sleep in public. These sweeps are not only on, they also pose a public health hazard. Sweeps during a deadly pandemic go directly against CDC guidelines, which recommend allowing unsheltered folks to remain where they are. No more sweeps. Defund the Hawthorne Police Department and divert these funds into community services, including resources that support our unhoused community members. Thank you for your time. Sam Chlonda.
Well, there's more. The next one. Dear Hawthorne City Council, my name is Nicole Cruz and I am a constituent in Hawthorne, California. I am writing to you today to demand a divestment from the Hawthorne Police Department and the reallocation of those funds to neglected community services. Hawthorne Police Department is currently receiving more than fifty percent of the city's budget. Meanwhile, our black and brown community members are lacking basic support. The current pandemic has made our marginalized communities more vulnerable than ever. There is an insufficient number of COVID-19 testing centers available. Our parks are lacking basic essentials. Our unhoused population is increasing. Our families are at risk of being evicted, and unemployment rates are not likely to decrease anytime soon. I stand with the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. What specific changes are you making to protect and serve our communities that does not criminalize our black and brown residents? I urge you to take initiative and invest in long-term strategies for education, healthcare, housing, and employment programs. Sincerely, your constituent in Hawthorne, Nicole Cruz. Next one. To whom it may concern at the city of Hawthorne. There are issues going on with our city that are leaving our unhoused neighborhoods unconstitutionally displaced and harassed by the Hawthorne Police Department's sweeps of citizens living outside of homes. The sweeps of our unhoused neighbors are causing displacement during a pandemic. The sweeps destabilize the individuals who are removed, causing destruction of their property, severing of their social connections and support, and making access to support services harder for them to access. Sweeping the streets to displace our unhoused neighbors is a tool of an oppressor, which brings down unjust cruelty down on those that are displaced. There are no other alternatives for the unhoused in Hawthorne as the city is lacking shelters for them to take refuge in, which makes the sweeps unconstitutional. They have no place to live either on public property or within shelter. Additionally, I support the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance's demands to defund the Hawthorne Police Department and invest those funds towards community improvement like services for unhoused residents that could alleviate the issues caused by the sweeps. Best, Connor Rafferty. Next one. As a member of the community, I am writing to Hawthorne City Council to ask the city of Hawthorne to immediately suspend all sweeps by the Hawthorne Police Department of our unhoused neighbors. In general, sweeps are cruel and exacerbate issues facing unhoused members of our community, but during a deadly pandemic, the practice is a serious public health hazard for everyone in the community and goes against current CDC guidelines. In addition, I support the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance to defund the Hawthorne Police Department and invest those funds towards community improvement like services for unhoused residents. Thank you, Sarah Quinn-Haw.
Next one. Hello, City of Hawthorne. I'm writing to you as one of your constituents to demand that there are no more sweeps in the city of Hawthorne. Sweeps during a deadly pandemic are a public health hazard and are discouraged by the CDC. If individual housing options are not available, allow people who are living unsheltered or in encampment to remain where they are, CDC. Also, sweeps further destabilize unhoused individuals and communities by destroying their social support connections to each other and necessary services. Sweeps are fundamentally cruel. Being forced to move and having possessions destroyed or stolen by government bodies is an act of violence against the unhoused. With no shelters in the city of Hawthorne and no legal place for the unhoused to sleep, removing them from sleeping on public property is unconstitutional. I support the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance to defund the Hawthorne Police Department and invest those funds towards community improvement like services for our unhoused residents. With care, Yezenia Mateo. It is utterly disgusting that our city of Hawthorne is more concerned with a continual funding of the violent and useless police instead of redistributing funds towards social causes. City of Hawthorne officials have also shown their vast inability to serve their constituents and especially unhoused communities. Why are officials not rushing to help our unhoused communities? And what is Hawthorne doing to fight further displacement because of imminent evictions and the displacement caused by gentrification because of SpaceX and the SoFi Stadium nearby? Sweeps during a deadly pandemic are a public health hazard and discouraged by the CDC. Quote, "If individual housing options are not available, allow people who are living unsheltered or in encampment to remain where they are," unquote. Sweeps are fundamentally cruel. Being forced to move and having possessions destroyed or stolen by government bodies is an act of violence against the unhoused. With no shelters in the city of Hawthorne and no legal place for the unhoused to sleep, removing them from sleeping on public property is unconstitutional. Calling on the city of Hawthorne to act right and immediately suspend all sweeps by Hawthorne PD of our unhoused neighbors. Sweeps during a deadly pandemic are a public health hazard and discouraged by the CDC. If individual housing options are not available, allow people who are living unsheltered or in encampment to remain where they are, CDC. Sweeps further destabilize unhoused individuals and communities by destroying their social support connections to each other and necessary services. Sweeps are fundamentally cruel. Being forced to move and having possessions destroyed or stolen by government bodies is an act of violence against unhoused. With no shelters in the city of Hawthorne and no legal place for the unhoused to sleep, removing them from sleeping on public property is unconstitutional. Cynthia Garcia. Hi, I'm Don Low. I'm a local resident and I want this in the public record. As a taxpayer and a citizen, I find it disgusting that the city is wasting resources to target the houseless during a pandemic. The CDC discourages cities from sweeps on the houseless because it's a health hazard during a time when we have infectious disease with no cure. Quote, "If no individual housing is available, allow people to live unsheltered or in encampments to remain where they are," unquote, the CDC recommends. Yet the city is ordering our public servants to perform these acts of cruelty. There are no shelters in Hawthorne, so driving them off public property is unconstitutional and is probably going to cause possibly infected individuals to wander further and spread COVID. Using police to attack vulnerable people convinces me that the city must defund the police department and use the money to provide shelters.
and use the money to provide shelters and services for the housing insecure. While we're ta- talking of this in humanity, the city must leave the community fridge alone. Millions of people lost jobs during this pandemic. There must be food insecure and the city has taken away a resource that cost them nothing. Thank you, Don Lo.
Dear Hawthorne City Council, my name is Jasmine Gonzalez. I'm a constituent in Hawthorne, California. I'm writing you today to demand the immediate suspension of all sweeps by Hawthorne PD of our unhoused neighbors. Not only have sweeps been deemed a public health hazard and are discouraged by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, but they further destabilize unhoused individuals and communities by destroying social support connections to each other and necessary services. Furthermore, sweeps are fundamentally cruel as being forced to move along with having possession destroyed or stolen by the same body of government sworn to protect and serve is an act of violence against the unhoused. They need not go through more trauma. Therefore, I urge and support the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance to defund the Hawthorne Police Department and invest those funds towards community improvement like services for our unhoused residents. Sincerely, your constituent Hawthorne Jasmine Gonzalez. Hello, I'm writing this public comment today to urge you to immediately end all sweeps of our unhoused friends and neighbors. The CDC has urged since the onset of coronavirus pandemic to shelter in place. How are unhoused neighbors supposed to do that when Hawthorne PD enforces these sweeps, uprooting their tents and destroying their belongings? What's more regarding the homeless, the CDC explicitly stated that we shall, should allow people who are living unsheltered or in encampments to remain where they are. Even if the coronavirus magically disappeared tomorrow, these sweeps are deeply immoral and do nothing to address the systemic costs, causes of homelessness. Traumatizing our unhoused neighbors on a regular basis does nothing to improve their position, and that's exactly what these sweeps do. Maybe you don't know because you get to sit in our air condition, in your air conditioned office and not think about it. But I watch women and children cry at the loss of their possessions at the hands of the police and sanitation workers. This is a choice that you guys are making. The solution to echo the Hawthorne Abolition Alliances is obviously to defund the Hawthorne Police Department and redirect the ridiculous amount of money they get every year back into the community, including our unhoused friends. All that you're proving by continuing to support both HPD as well as the sweeps is that you're terrified of the idea that your community doesn't need you, which we don't. And so you have to act out to feel important, important and powerful. Don't like what I'm seeing, saying, prove me wrong. Dear Count, dear city council, it has been brought to my attention that Hawthorne has been conducting several sweeps on our streets. Not only is this against CDC guides because of our current pandemic, it is a public health hazard. But it's inhumane. Rather than conducting these sweeps, remove funds from PD and allocate them towards services that will support unhoused folks.
Or you got some more?
We have more. Hello, my name is Dottie and I'm a member of Street Watch LA and supporter of the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. The practice of cleanups, a euphemism for sweeping unhoused people is cruelty and violence under normal circumstances. However, let's talk about why Hawthorne especially should abolish sweeps as a practice. Number one, public health is at risk, housed or unhoused. We are in a pandemic and spreading people around. With evictions and sweeps will only worsen public health. It's not just me. Listen to the CDC. Number two, Hawthorne has no shelters and not even designated areas where unhoused people are allowed to exist. Not only is it crappy of you, but it's literally unconstitutional. It is cruel and unusual punishment to sweep people who have nowhere else to go and there is absolutely no way for you to rationalize that. Don't think we won't hold you accountable for that. Look at the preliminary injunction on Garcia versus LA. You think we won't come for you too? Number three, using police budget to have a presence at these sweeps is violent, wasteful and a blank you to trauma-informed care. How dare you act as if you care for the lives of our unhoused neighbors while not taking a hard stand against sweeps? How dare you? Thank you for your time, Dottie Alexander. Next. I would like to express my concern with the subject of sweeps in the city of Hawthorne. I understand how important it is to help our unhoused folk. My heart goes out to them and I believe we must do more to help them. However, I do see the impact of letting them set tents in our city. I am honestly concerned for my safety. I am seeing more unhoused people walking around aimlessly in obvious need of help. It is sad and scary at the same time. I live very close to the freeway and I see the effect of this matter. The piles of trash that is left behind and the fires are concerning, concerning too. This is not sanitary and unhealthy for all of us. Like I said, I do believe we must do more to help them. Next. I am writing as a Hawthorne resident, member, member is Street Watch LA and an ally of the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance to call upon each of you to address the shameful way the city treats our poor, food insecure and unhoused neighbors. Specifically, I am disgusted by the reemergence of cruel, dangerous and unnecessary sweeps of our unhoused neighbors. I've heard multiple firsthand accounts and seen citations to from Hawthorne PD indicating that unhoused people in the city are being threatened and forced to move from their encampments. There are many reasons this is wrong. First and foremost, that this is plainly cruel and inhumane. Anyone who has any experience with homelessness or has talked to someone living on the streets can tell you how traumatic and destabilizing losing your home community and often your possessions is. Without reliable communication, knowing where to find each other is essential for maintaining contacts with community members and service providers. The US Supreme agreed that this behavior is cruel and has ruled that the forced removal of people from sleeping in public spaces where there is not legal place, for example, a shelter, to stay constitutes cruel and unusual punishment. Not only do you place these unhoused individuals at risk, but you are willfully leaving Hawthorne open to a lawsuit we can ill afford. Speaking of risks, we are still in the middle of a deadly pandemic. The CDC specifically recommends allowing homeless folks to stay where they are as a matter of public health and safety. Lastly, this will do nothing to assage the abysmal conditions faced by our unhoused neighbors. Hopefully, we can all agree that the fact that people are living on our streets with no support services is not a good thing. I calling you to defund Hawthorne PD who are wasting taxpayer money terrorizing vul- vulnerable community members and invest the money, invest that money in serving the people of the city, including those living outside. I'm further calling for transparency and accountability regarding who is initiating and authorizing these sweeps and who is responsible for the attempt to shut down the Hawthorne Community Fridge. These things don't just happen and the citizens and voters of the city deserve to know who in this government is behind them. I look forward to answers regarding these matters, Maggie Clark.
Dear Hawthorne City Council, my name is Lawrence Valencia and I'm a constituent in Hawthorne, California. I'm writing to you today to demand a divestment from the Hawthorne Police Department and the relocation of those funds to neglect commu- to neglected community services. Uh, HPD is currently receiving more than fifty percent of the city's budget. Meanwhile, our black and brown community members are lacking basic support. You cannot claim there, that there is insufficient fun- insufficient funds when you purposely overfund the police and cause insufficient funds. There will never be enough money unless you defund the police department and relocate the, those funds towards our communities. The current pandemic has made our marginalized communities more vulnerable than ever. There is insufficient number of COVID nineteen testing centers available. Our set, our, our parks are lacking basic essentials. Our unhoused population is increasing. Our families are at risk of being evicted and unemployment rates are not likely to decrease anytime soon. I stand with the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance. What specific changes are you making to protect our and serve our communities that does not criminalize our black and brown residents? I urge you to take initiative and invest in long-term strategies for education, healthcare, housing and employment programs. Sincerely, your constituent in Hawthorne, Lawrence Valencia. That was the final public comment.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, I am very concerned about the inhumane sweeps that are occurring right now. Not only are they exasperating the issue by creating further instability and endangerment to unhoused folks with nowhere else to go, it is also far more dangerous to have people move potentially spread COVID with each sweep. Fans stay put. It is not in their best interest nor that of the greater community and has no logical basis or justification. This is abhorrent, immoral and endlessly cruel. I wholeheartedly support the demands listed by the Hawthorne Abolition Alliance to defund the Hawthorne Police Department and invest those funds towards community members and the unhoused residents of Hawthorne.
That was the final public comment.
If there's no one else further, I declare oral communications closed order. Mr. City Clerk, can you read the consent calendar?
Yes, I can. Mr. Mayor, I have six items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item five, approval of the city council minutes for the regular meetings of July twenty eighth, twenty twenty, August eleventh, twenty twenty and August twenty fifth, twenty twenty. Councilmember Awad will be abstaining from the July twenty eighth minutes. Item six, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item eleven, resolution number eighty-two oh five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming September fifteenth, twenty twenty through October fifteenth, twenty twenty as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Hawthorne, California. Item twelve, resolution number eight-two-two-seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, supporting HR seven-eight oh nine, helping open proper, Properties Endeavor Act of twenty twenty or the Hope Act of twenty twenty to assist the commercial real estate market and the commercial mortgage-backed securities market affected by COVID nineteen, by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Item thirteen, resolution number eight-two-two-nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, opposing pending housing legislations and expressing support for actions to further strengthen local authority and control for adoption.
Motion.
Like to pull thirteen for discussion, please.
Yeah, sure. Fine. I make a motion on all items except thirteen.
Second.
Okay, uh, I made the motion. Councilwoman Valentine has seconded. Please vote on all items except thirteen. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Thayda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
All right, thirteen discussion?
Uh, yes. Uh, so the reason for the discussion is that, um, uh, when bills go through the state legislature, everything is very fluid. And several of these bills that, uh, have been listed are now dead. They either, um, they either didn't go through committee or they, they were not, um, they were not passed. So AB thirty-one oh seven, SB nine-nine-five, SB ten-eighty-five, SB eleven-twenty and SB eleven-thirty-eight are all dead. There are other bills that were passed through the legislature and, and have been, um, and have gone to the governor to be signed. And that, uh, those are AB seven-twenty-five, AB eighteen-fifty-one and AB twenty-one-sixty-eight. And, um, those need special treatment in that, um, when we send the letter to the legislature, uh, when we send the letter, we need to send it to the governor in this, in the case of those three bills that have already passed. In the case of the other bills, um, those should go to, uh, to our legislators. And that's the, um, the amendment I'd like to make to the agenda item.
Any other comment?
Okay, so. To the chair?
Yes, sir.
Can Ms. Valentine repeat those three bills that has gone to the governor's desk, please?
Sure, um, AB seven-two-five, AB eighteen-fifty-one and AB two-three-four-five.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. You wanna make a motion?
So I'll, I'll move that, um, on all the other bill, on, on all the other, uh, pending bills that we, uh, filed this, uh, resolution in opposition.
A second.
Okay. Roll, roll call, vote, vote, please.
Councilmember Awad? You're muted.
Yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Thayda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
So item number nine, the bids?
Yes. Now is the time and place for, to declare publicly received sealed bids for Prairie Avenue Improvement Project, Phase Two Project Number twenty dash twelve. Public Works Department Declaration of Publications filed, there were seven bids received. All were accompanied by bidders' bonds. The prices are as follows. Shaunan, three million, five hundred and four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Sequel, three million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Pixel paving, three million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred dollars. Griffith Co., four million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. All American Asphalt, three million, three hundred and seventy-nine, ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Hardy and Harper, uh, three million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Sully Miller, three million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Right? Is there a motion?
You have to send it to the staff.
Yeah, but there's a motion to accept the bids. Anybody wanna make the motion?
Come on.
Second.
Please, uh, vote to accept the bids.
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Thayda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item number sixteen?
Orders number twenty-two oh eight, first reading, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving amendments to municipal code section two-point-four-four-point-zero-seven-six regarding continuous recruitment and selection, entry level for introduction.
I'll introduce.
Good, thank you. Item number seventeen?
I believe that's you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, okay, I thought there was some pre, uh, pre, uh, preface. Item number seventeen is the general matters. Finance Director Felice Lopez has an oral report on item eighteen, which is the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one blanket purchase orders. Uh, Felice, would you like to go ahead? Felice?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp and Council. Uh, staff is recommending approval of blanket purchase orders for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. This is a new process which we anticipate will streamline the current purchasing process. Uh, by issuing vendors one purchase order every year rather than several, the city increases its efficiency and saves money through better pricing. Uh, this is in compliance with the city's purchasing policy and this level of proposed purchases which exceed twenty-five thousand dollars per purchase order requires city council approval. Competitive bidding is required for all requests. The total amount being requested for your approval is twenty-two million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Um, if you have any questions, department heads and I are available for, for any question that you have.
Thank you. I make a motion?
Second.
Um, please vote, roll call?
Councilmember Awad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Thayda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Director of Recreation and, uh, Community Services, Vaughn Norris, has an oral report on item nineteen. It's an update on our five-year plan to address homelessness in our community. Okay, go ahead, uh, Mr. Vaughn.
Great. Good evening. Hello. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, City Council. At this time, I want to give an update on implementation of Hawthorne's five-year plan to address homelessness in our community. Um, I have some statistics I'd like to share with the group. Uh, homelessness has increased by a hundred and five percent over the last four years in Hawthorne. Street homelessness has increased by twenty percent. Vehicle homelessness has increased by eighty percent. Overall, California has experienced similar increases in a overall homelessness during the last four years. So basically, this is not just a Hawthorne problem, it's a regional problem. Uh, what the city has done to combat, uh, these rising numbers, Uh, what the city has done to combat, uh, these rising numbers, staff has polled community members, business owners, stakeholders, um, to create a five-year plan to address homelessness that includes eight goals. Uh, we have contracted with a local service provider that has provided City of Hawthorne an eighteen-month employee that is helping us and assisting us to fight the homelessness in Hawthorne. We have also placed, uh, several wash stations in parks to assist with the spread of covid. Staff has also created a resource guide for individuals experiencing homelessness that has fit, uh, that fits their needs. As mentioned in the staff report, um, there was a great program, Project Room Key. It's a collaborative effort to secure homeless hotels, excuse me, hotels and motels for vulnerable people experiencing homelessness uh, that was established by the state. And the Los Angeles, uh, homeless service provider, LASSA, in April twenty-twenty. Uh, this will protect high-risk individuals and help prevent the spread of covid nineteen. It protects the capacity of our hospitals and healthcare system during covid nineteen. The Sea of Hawthorne, this is very important, has submitted sixty-seven referrals to this program, and we have been able to house thirty-two individuals from the two-hundred-and-five individuals that was recorded during I, during our homeless count in January twenty-twenty. In August of twenty-twenty, city council approved additional five-hundred thousand, excuse me, fifty thousand in funds for the city to provide uh, intervention, emergency resources of people that are experience, experiencing homelessness. Staff is currently working with regional partners to collaborate, uh, additional outreach service provider, which will allow the city to provide, uh, outreach during the evening and weekends. Staff will update city council during our mid-year budget report on our homeless issues. Um, and some of the internal things that we're doing as a city, uh, we're constantly doing c- community outreach. Uh, we have annual resource fairs for homeless, annual senior homelessness prevention fairs. We have our potential veteran housing project, and we also have an internal Hawthorne Homeless Task Force. I feel at this point Hawthorne is meeting, uh, the expectations of city council residents. Uh, a side note, out of Spa Eight Service Planning Area Eight, out of the ten or so cities in that area, we're one of three cities that does have a, uh, homeless service provider on our staff. I think that's a commitment to our elected officials, our residents, and staff. And at this time, I can answer any questions, um, that council might have.
Uh, thank you, um, thank you, Vaughn, for that very comprehensive report. We really appreciate the effort that you're making to, um, to intercede in this problem, very difficult problem. I have a question about what do we know about the people who are experiencing homelessness? Are they families? Are they individuals? What do we know about them? And, and are they, are they experiencing homelessness because they were laid off? Are they experiencing homelessness because of other things, mental illness? What do we know about them?
I, I think Councilwoman Valentine, you've named them all. I think every individual that we have here in Hawthorne has a different story. And I think, uh, it leads to what you said, unemployment, mental issues, stability, uh, dependency. Uh, there's not one shoe that fits all the sizes. And that goes back to the resource guide that our homeless service coordinator with our help has created. Then that resource guide, for every, um, imaginable issue that a person can have, there's a resource in there for that person.
Okay. Uh, and, and you're, you're, so you, you started with two-hundred-and-five, or we started with two-hundred-and-five in the beginning of twenty-twenty? And we've, we've now reduced that by thirty-two, is that correct?
Yes, that's what the numbers say.
Oh, that's really good. That's good. That's good.
One other thing I, I did not mention, that the Hawthorne has enlisted a two-year agreement with LASSA to host the homeless count for the next two years. And I think, you know, that's the Sea of Hawthorne being a flagship and the dedication we have to, uh, help assist this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Vaughn, what, what are we doing, if anything, for the people that are living in a car?
Uh, it goes back to the resource guide. Um, there's options out there. We're working with, uh, city staff and city manager to come up with a, uh, a one unique situation to resolve those issues. So we're in talks about, uh, resolving that issue, and hopefully during our mid-year budget, uh, excuse me, mid-year budget, um, meeting that I can have updated information regarding what are we doing for those individuals in cars.
Okay, when, when, um, okay. Cause, uh, you know, um, sleeping in a car is one step from being homeless. Do they have a place to go? Do they park? Where, where, where do they, you know, we're, we're, we're counting ninety-six, uh, people in our city living in a car. But do we know where they park, where they eat, where they spend the night, how they shower, or anything like that?
Uh, I don't have all the information. I do know that number's high, and there's, uh, different programs that the county is offering. We're surveying those opportunities, and we're seeing what was gonna be the best fit for the Sea of Hawthorne.
In terms of the, the thirty-two that we've, uh, found shelter for, not shelter, but shelter, basically. Um, where, where did we do that? Where did they go? Do you have that information?
Well, I have a, a somewhat of idea. We worked with three different nearby, uh, Room Key, uh, uh, motel hotels, uh, two in Lawndale and one in Lenox, if I remember right. So they were housed, um, at those motels hotels.
Have we, have we done anything to, or do we know of a hotel or a motel here in the city that we can, um, use for that program?
Um, absolutely. Uh, our service provider, Jess Ramirez, has polled several motels and hotels in Hawthorne. Um, at this point, out of the three or four he has contacted, uh, they're not, uh, ready to enter into agreement to have Project Room Key at their motel or hotel.
Is there anything, uh, uh, that we can do legally to force them to cooperate or to, um, take part in this program?
I can work through city manager and city attorney after this meeting, and hopefully city manager can have a report back for you ne- at the next meeting.
Yeah.
See if they have to do a board or not.
Cause that would seem like the quickest way to get some of this, uh, some of these people off the streets, if we could, uh, convince some of these motels that probably are, uh, yeah, anyway, that, that would be probably one of the quickest way I'd like to see, um, hear about what we're doing in that area and what we could do in that area.
Certainly.
Uh, to the chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, hi Vaughn, thank you for the presentation. Um, it's good, uh, to know, you know, to put out there that, uh, we are doing everything we can to help our homeless. I, I want you, uh, to talk a little bit, I don't know if Jesse's still there, about the difficulty sometimes that you guys encounter, uh, for some individual that we try to help but do not want the service. I want you to talk a little bit about that, a- and then also, I want you to talk about that also that we are looking into do, you know, safe parking and maybe shower, you know, place for people to shower. So I want you to talk more about those initiatives that we are looking to how we wanna help our homeless. But I want you to focus on specifically of some individual that, that sometimes, you know, for some, some, uh, issue they have, maybe they have, they have a dog, they cannot go to shelter, may- maybe they, they're not married, they cannot go together. So I want you to talk a little bit about that for me, please.
Okay, I'm gonna take the first question regarding, uh, the safe parking, then I'll let Jesse follow up with his, um, with his field work there. Parking, we have created a, a Google survey, uh, to, uh, survey individuals in the Sea of Hawthorne, residents, stakeholders, business owners, to see if that would be feasible. Uh, we're getting modest, um, opinions back regarding maybe activating a service like that. Uh, once our survey is completed, as I said before, I'll work with city manager and city attorney to see if that's, uh, something we can insulate in the Sea of Hawthorne. So we're act- actively looking for areas and pulling the community to see if that's something they want here. And if I can turn over Jesse to speak about his field work, uh, regarding individuals that might not wanna be housed, could you speak on that, please, uh, Jesse?
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Uh, and just briefly mentioning before I even, uh, answer that question, um, for, for, for everyone who doesn't know the, the field work and the tenacity that it takes to actually be in the trenches of homelessness, i- it's difficult for several reasons. One is, uh, the service provision. Uh, in Spa Eight specifically, there is a, it's a desert for, uh, services, meaning, um, there are no immediate shelters. Um, there's probably maybe one safe parking site in the whole spa. So definitely by reaching out to folks and linking them up to resources that aren't there, it makes it ten times more difficult to actually house, um, somebody who is homeless. Um, but just, uh, the, the concept of, of being homeless, i- it's so complex that Olivia Valentine, I believe you, you touched on all of those points. Somebody can, uh, be disabled. Somebody can have, um, pets, somebody can have low income. Um, somebody can have a really, uh, long, uh, record of unsustainable credit that can also affect their housing. So it really runs the gamut when we're looking at housing and the intersection with homelessness. So, uh, i- it's, it's really complex and it's really delicate. And, uh, how we address the issue, um, i- is gonna be, um, is, is gonna be the challenge, but I think as a city, we're up for that challenge.
Yeah, but Jesse, uh, can you just brief mention that we sometimes we go out, you know, outreach to these people and trying to do some case managing, and then some of them, uh, refuse to say go to shelter or, or even, uh, accept any type of service. I want you to specifically talk on that one, okay?
Well, sure. Well, i- it's, um, not to pigeonhole that. Um, there, there are some folks that just deny services at the moment, and that's okay. Um, part of my job is not to force them into some type of housing unit or immediate housing shelter that they don't wanna be in. Um, my job is to offer them the resource, and if they're ready, I'm there to guide them. There are those other folks, uh, like I said, there's folks who deny it at the moment. But then there's, there's those, uh, the, uh, other individuals who are ready to be housed, and they have um, all the resources and the motivation to get housed, but maybe, um, income is an issue. Maybe their mental health is an issue, maybe their substance use is an issue. So it's all of these, um, all of these factors that we really have to evaluate. It, it's not just a snap of my finger and I can house somebody. It's, it's really sitting down with that person, hearing their story, um, evaluating their needs and what they address and what they call home, what home really looks like for them.
Yeah. I, I thank you, I thank you for that, because that is what we, we, we need to, you know, to, to understand that, uh, uh, you know, you guys, you know, the Jesse and, and the Hawthorne Homeless Task Force is out there. Try to know the, the individual that are on the street, try to understand their needs and come up with a, with a plan, a case managed plan that could be able to help them. And, and you're completely right. We cannot force nobody to go to treatment or to go to shelter. But what leaves we out there, try to give them the resources that we have and, you know, connect them to the right, uh, right service. And sometimes, you know, like you said, it's difficult because they have some, some issues that sometimes we have to transcend. But some of them sometimes just decide to stay on the street. So that's the difficult part. And, and because, you know, we have a lot of phone calls, uh, of people saying, oh, there is a lot of homeless in Hawthorne, or there is in Camden. But yes, we are trying to, to do our best, and we try, we wanted, the message that out there is, yes, Hawthorne is willing to help the homeless, if they're w- willing also to help, to help themselves. And we do have service in place that with LASSA and PAT and, and, and this, and, and the, uh, face base in, in San Pedro that could allow us to provide some type of resources for them if they're willing to do so. So what I want, trying to say to all of people that are listening, that, uh, the city council, all of us are trying to help the homeless. Sometimes it is difficult, but we know it's a challenge and we are up to it. So thank you, Jesse and, and Vaughn.
Jesse, uh, uh, to the chair. Um, you know, are they, um, have you, what, what? There's, I know we don't have a shelter in, in the city, in Hawthorne. But there are some shelters that are operated by the much bigger, uh, organizations like um, Salvation Army. I know they have a big one in, uh, in, out there in, uh, Southgate somewhere in that area. Uh, are, are some of the churches and some of the nonprofits around town, are they pitching in and, and trying to uh, help out a little bit, do you know?
Um, yeah, I can answer that, uh, Councilman Toledo. Uh, yes, the, the churches are helping out, um, as far as food, pantries, uh, items like that, but, uh, we haven't had a church in our city, uh, as of today, uh, assist with sheltering. Uh, as I said before, we have that great project, the, the Veterans Housing Project. And I'm hopefully thinking or hoping that after that project, we can enter to another project to assist the other areas of homelessness that we have in Hawthorne.
Yeah, I, I had a lot of veterans that were sleeping in cars before they ultimately got a home, and they were, there were safe places where they could go and sleep. Do we have any places like that, like, you know, some of the parking lots, like Walmart and so forth, would allow them to come and spend the night there and, you know, in a, in a safer environment? Do we have anything like that, uh, in Hawthorne?
Uh, what I can suggest is that we can do a, a field survey and put something together and add that to our resource guide. If we can find, uh, areas and parking lots and storefronts that are willing to enter into an agreement of, of so. So that's something we can do a case study and have a report to report back to council.
Yeah. Well, I know that nonprofits are always, uh, ahead of everybody in, in, in this area, you know, and uh, I don't know what, uh, you know, what, what, uh, what's out there in that, in, in terms of, you know, maybe them sharing a little bit, um, or helping with the, with the sheltering somewhat. I, I don't. We have a lot of nice churches in Hawthorne doing a lot of good stuff, you know? But, uh, anyone?
To the chair, um, Vaughn and Jesse, um, again, thank you for tackling this, this hard issue. Um, it's not gonna be easy, especially with how covid kind of rolled in and, um, flipped up the market. Um, it is going to take some time for us to get back to pre-covid levels. Um, but you know, it seems to me, there's a, there's a disconnect in communication. Um, and maybe having some more public engagement, um, cause then we have the task force, um, through our city. But maybe the programs that yourself and Jesse are running, maybe inviting these groups, um, that are a part of these other organizations, uh, into making like our own little other separate task force alongside with them. At least this way, the public can see that, okay, one, we're engaging, two, they could, maybe they can see or find resources that we haven't seen, or maybe they're connected with some organization or nonprofit that can get us in line with those sheltering or food or things like that. But creating, um, creating this kind of community task force that works alongside what you and Jesse are doing, well, it kinda goes hand and foot. Uh, this way, um, it's not like they'll know we're not trying to pull the wool over their eyes, and they'll be there with us, working in the community, trying to address this problem. Now, if we do it as a community, it'll make it a lot easier, um, almost like kinda getting community caseworkers to go out there and kind of, um, address the issue. We think of the possibility of, of doing that, inviting some of these groups, um, to lend a hand in, um, addressing it. Absolutely. Those are all great recommendations, and that's something we'll take back to a drawing board. Uh, we have an internal homeless task force meeting coming up, uh, early, the first part of October. Oh, Jesse, is that correct? Is it September, October?
The internal homeless task force meeting will be taking place September twenty-second at nine-thirty A M.
Okay, so that will pre, post-covid, that'll be our first meeting due to, we're gonna interact with Zoom. And we will bring that up, we'll add that to the agenda to maybe, uh, start a more transparent task force where community members can actually see the work we're doing, and they can actually partner with us moving forward. Yeah, and I think that would kind of ease a lot of the, the tension and the issue. Um, now you're just bringing more resources out from the community to kind of fight, cause this is a regional issue, um, and to try and take it head-on just by ourselves, it's going to be difficult. But if we start reaching out, um, maybe those groups might have other cities that can jump in with us too, and then that's how we can start. It's going to be difficult, but if we start reaching out, um maybe those groups might have other cities that can jump in with us too, and then that's how we can start this. Snowball effect um into getting these resources to address it and help out the underserved that need it.
Absolutely, thank you for that recommendation.
Vaughn, uh just uh you can also mention about the South Bay Cog homeless task force that we have eighteen cities. That are dealing with this issue on 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 a regular basis.
Absolutely, not to put out any other city neighboring city, but uh we are participants with the Call Up Task Force that meets quarterly. Uh we are one of their highlighted cities. We're one of the most proactive city in that uh cog and Mr. Montero knows that. So we're actively working to solve this problem that we have in Hawthorne. Um and working through our internal task force, the South Bay Cog Task Force. And our other task forces that we work with neighboring cities to come to a a solution and. Uh give those resources to the individuals in Hawthorne that are homeless. So it's it's a great task force, um. It is very educational, um we work with other cities and we pass along uh information to help each other out.
Uh to the chair, you know Jesse, um the work that you do is heartbreaking. You know, it's very difficult work and I really commend you on on uh on that job because it's not an easy job to do, you know? It really tears you emotionally. I mean, I've been to quite a few of the shelters in downtown LA along San Pedro. Uh I've seen the people that live in those shelters. Uh it's so hard to deal with them because so many of them really have a a substance abuse issue. Or a mental issue and um. Boy, it's really hard because no matter what you do, it's so hard to reach some of those people. So. You know, I thank you for your effort and I and I recognize how hard that that work is, so you know. Thank you for everything you do. That's it.
And one thing I wanted to mention lastly for we we changed uh subjects is that Jesse Ramirez is Hawthorne um. Homeless Service Provider. Uh he will be staffed with us until June of next year. He's doing an excellent job. He hit the ground running. And a lot of our results is due to his hard work and I just wanted to at this moment say thank you for doing what you do for the city Hawthorne. And we're happy to have you here. Thank you, Jesse.
All right, so I make a motion to accept the plan.
Agreed.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and councilmembers voting yes.
Mister City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um I have items twenty one through twenty four on my consent calendar for your consideration.
I wanna pull twenty three.
Yes. Go ahead. Um so I make a motion on all items except twenty three.
Second.
Please uh roll call vote.
Councilmember Wad?
Yes.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeda?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Uh, Mayor Potem Montero, I think you have might have the same concern as me.
All right, thank you. This question is probably is gonna be go to Russell because uh uh I think uh. Our city manager Atticley was not here yet. When we released the first uh request for proposal. Uh and then it was one company that we discussed, so that so that mean that they didn't accept. The condition that we there were in that first RFP, that's the first question. And second, Russell, uh there is a possibility of instead of. Sell the property, can we ground lease the property? So those are my two questions.
Okay, well, we did have the first RFP that was done last November and there was a response. Uh to build the eighteen units. But um when it came time during the negotiations uh for the E and A. They indicated that because of COVID nineteen, that the financing situation had changed. And they were requesting uh to build more units, I think over thirty units. And um we'd expressed to them that that is unfair to the other. Uh folks that had applied and submitted responses to the first RFP. Because a lot of them didn't that uh submit responses for building more than eighteen units. So basically um uh the the time in which us for us to negotiate the E and A has has expired. Um and we've been talking with our um consultant who prepared the um RFP, Hitta Mosman. And she's on, I believe. Are you there, Hitta?
I'm here. Hi there.
Yeah, and um uh Hitta was involved also in the fact that um the. There was their response didn't that change after they submitted back in November, December. And uh Hitta was advising uh myself and and staff about uh this new RFP. And about her knowledge of other groups that can in fact develop uh an eighteen unit project. That she believes can be successful and that can get financing based upon the. Uh the criteria that's mentioned in the RFP. And go ahead, Hitta. Oh, uh the first question that. Uh Mayor Potem had was uh why not a ground lease rather than rather than a sale?
So, hi there, everyone, um. Mayor and members of the city council, um in terms of the question about why a ground lease versus a sale. Um it's my understanding that this property, Cordary, was acquired with tax increment revenue. From the prior redevelopment agency. And as such, i- it's technically a um housing successor property. When redevelopment was uh dissolved in two thousand and twelve, there were some assembly bills that were passed. Uh that dealt with sort of the wind down of redevelopment. And one of them, uh one assembly bill was specific to the housing successor properties. Where the successor entity for the low and moderate income housing property and assets in cash. And that's uh that that law says that you cannot retain um these housing successor properties. It's the intent of the law to um encourage uh form cities who had former redevelopment agencies. To create units with those land assets.
Thank you, very good.
A quick question. So when we put it out, the first time when we got that one response, it was uh set for sale as well? And development, uh Mrs. Miss uh Mosesman?
Yeah.
Yes, that's right. Um I I wasn't personally involved in uh the initial RFP. But did see it after Century Housing had been selected as the developer. Um and there were some circumstances that from my understanding and my involvement had changed for the developer. Um and so this was uh I think the reason to look at reissuing the RFP. In recent years, there have been um a few very successful projects built specifically for homeless veterans. And one of them uh that I was talking with Russell about was a project called Potter's Lane in Orange County in Midway City. It was a sixteen unit uh project and constructed from uh recycled shipping containers. And um you know, there were multiple funding sources that came uh in to uh make that project a reality. But what we're starting to see now is um more creative um construction. Uh methods like modular, like recycled shipping containers. Uh that are more sustainable and more cost effective. And what we've also seen is even since you have uh released the RFP, the original RFP. Uh over a year ago, we're seeing more grant funding coming from the state of California. For uh projects uh for permanent supportive housing. Uh for homeless uh and special needs populations such as homeless veterans.
Oh, go ahead, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm I'm sorry. That's my sort of long-winded answer, the things that have sort of changed in the last year and a half.
So the question, okay, so it's just the grant funding to be to have the developer be able to build this has changed. There's more. Accessibility to grants and uh help from the government, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So none of the other conditions with regards to specifications have changed. We're just putting it back out for uh bids, is that correct?
That is correct, and we put some language in the RFP um. That further clarified, based on our experience, uh based on your experience issuing the original RFP. Uh in twenty nineteen, we further clarified some of the issues such as. Um permanent supportive housing projects require what's called project-based vouchers. And those vouchers make up the difference between the income that can come from the future residents, which is usually li- very limited. Uh their sources of income and what market rate rents are to make these projects work financially. Um and so those vouchers are can be in very short supply in LA County because a large number of homeless. In this county. So we've clarified that we're working with um the county on eighteen vouchers. We've identified that that's the max that can be um procured for this project. So that that should eliminate um sort of any back and forth and maybe any future changes. Once a developer is selected.
Okay, so uh what it so, I mean, I think you might have embedded in what you just said, you might have answered my question, but. Um say we have a developer that commits to building the eighteen units or based on the specifications, everything that we put out. Uh what enforce what enforcement powers do we have as a city to ensure that they're not gonna try to do this? Change their story around and, you know, um try to ask for more and try to change the purpose. Uh do they just get eliminated out of the processes? I mean, are we gonna be caught up in litigation to try to enforce that? Um ma'am?
So what I can tell you is uh the reason I think that we're not gonna have that situation this time. Is because uh my team will be working with the partnering with city staff. To really vet the applications, to review their pro forma analysis, to look at their assumptions in terms of funding. And to verify those, given our last experience. So there'll be a a very detailed vetting process that will go through before a developer is selected. And then after a developer is selected and you start talking about um entering into a development agreement. That's where language can be written in, um such as a schedule of performance for the developer. Agreements are made about how many units, about change orders. Um and it really does commit the developer to doing the project that they've agreed to.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. To the to the chair. So those eighteen um vouchers are HUD VAS vouchers, is that what they are?
That's correct.
Now, we didn't have that before, did we? I mean, we didn't have a guarantee of eighteen HUD VASH on the previous uh offering, did we?
I don't think that last time I I. I even though I wasn't personally involved with the previous RFP. Um I think that the idea was that the vouchers would be requested after the developer was selected. Which is actually very has been typical for the last several years. However, because of the success of Measure H on the countywide level. Um there are a lot of permanent supportive housing projects moving forward, particularly in the city of Los Angeles. And what's happened is is um the county gets a certain number of vouchers um from HUD. And because there are so many more permanent supportive housing projects. It's they're harder to come by now because there are so many projects, which is really a good thing. Uh but I think that even in the last twelve months, what we've been seeing is that. Um it's really important to start getting the the commitment process started, which we are going to be doing with the county. We've already reached out to the county, um and they've told us the process that we need to go through. Um and that will actually be done on the city side so that um the city will have control over. The voucher portion of it and know that that those funds will be there to make this project work financially rather than rely.
Have a little bit more flexibility on on the uh the um selection process. Uh of developers. In other words, prior to that, we're talking about getting developers that have a lot of experience. In homeless, uh I mean homeless, I'm sorry, on veteran housing. Um I would think that if a developer already has eighteen vouchers set aside. That that would make it a little easier to operate that particular um project, no?
Yeah, I definitely think it's a benefit that we stayed in the RFP that we're undergoing the process of. Securing the vouchers. So that's one less thing, as you pointed out, that the developer would have to do on their own. Especially now that we're seeing within the last year or so, lots of permanent supportive housing projects moving forward. And you have to um, you have to at least have a proposed project to apply for theirs.
With those vouchers, could they maybe made part of the uh CCNRs or? Or whatever, you know, the the covenants, but they run with the land, in other words. Can you get a commitment from the county that they will always be available?
Uh so we we're in the process right now of securing the vouchers. What I've seen in the emails that we've been sending back and forth is that, you know, there. There seems to be availability. We just need to go through the process of applying. But um you bring up a good point. There are two different types of vouchers through HUD. There are um tenant-based vouchers, which a a person who secures a voucher can take to any apartment.
Right.
Um and rent that, and that's really, it runs with the tenant rather than than the project. But what we're looking at securing are the project-based vouchers.
Okay.
And you're exactly right. They will be. Exactly, as tenants would would come and go, the vouchers would stay with the project.
Okay, so then you just have to be a qualified vet that would qualify for that voucher, and then that would be your uh. Sort of your application process, no?
That's correct.
Yeah, do you think that there's more people available today? Uh for like you mentioned for smaller units like that, because I know all the developers, they always wanna, you know, the more the better. But uh we feel that the less the better and at least when it comes to veteran housing. Uh do you think that there's more people available for that right now?
I think that developers are starting to understand the the availability of vouchers. I think. When we didn't have so many projects moving forward in LA County for permanent supportive housing. Those vouchers were a little easier to get.
Yeah.
Um and so I think the developers do understand there's not an unlimited number. Um and so I and and the project financially will not work without the vouchers. Because they need the rental income for operating expenses and to pay debt.
Nobody wants to lose money with with that, so.
That's correct, and that think that we're gonna be successful in finding a developer who's willing to stay with the eighteen. Because regardless of zoning and densities and and this, there really, there aren't unlimited vouchers. Um and the county, the city of Los Angeles has secured many for the many projects they have going. So. I think the development community is starting to understand that these resources are not unlimited. And um you know, you can't make it work. You can't just, you know, getting thirty two vouchers right now, I think, would be a difficult thing to do.
Do you think, I I mean, the city's supplying the land and even some seed money. Uh is there a large amount of financing that's going to require the to finish a project? Have you gone over the numbers on what it would take to actually do that whole project?
We did do some vetting on Century Housing's pro forma. Uh I have not done an analysis of of how much it would be. What we're trying to do is is ask the development community. Bring us your most creative and best project um with these guidelines with the nu- this number. Um I can tell you from my um previous experience um doing what this is called development underwriting. Which is where you look at the financial feasibility, you look at different funding sources and what funding sources can be used. Putting together affordable housing projects, including permanent supportive housing. Is financially is kind of like putting pieces of a jigsaw puzzle together. There's a little bit of funding from the state grant funding. There's a little bit maybe from tax credits. There's a little bit from the project-based vouchers. So it really does require multiple funding sources. And so what we're looking for is um developers who are maximizing those available funding sources. So that the amount of subsidy they might be asking from the city is minimized.
But at the end, but at the end of the day, you're gonna be getting market rents anyway. Between the combination of the uh of the um. Uh the vouchers and you and then the bed itself paying a certain amount of of the bed. So basically, it's all based on regular market rents, no?
Y- yes, the revenue that comes in, but because because you've got the land and because there, you know, could potentially be. discussion of subsidy, you know, this is this is a good place to be for a project. To have both the land and some financial assistance available. And I think that what we want to make sure of is that the development proposals that come in are realistic. The costs are realistic, the revenues are realistic, and that really can work financially. The sources of revenue, you know, are obtainable on pursuant to the schedule that is proposed. So that's what we'll be doing is going over this with a fine tooth comb to make sure that it all makes sense, the numbers are adding correctly and that it's it's a reasonable project so that you you all won't have to, you know, have to sort of consider any more RFPs.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, well, good luck. Let's try to move forward a little bit quicker, but go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
That's the the key point, okay, because we have lost maybe two years on this project, right? Because we were hoping to celebrate Grand Open now or even the beginning of 2021. So now it is going to is it has been delayed. So we want to make sure that when they submit their proposal, they're going to stick with that. So we have to make sure that there is some type of a language there or an affidavit that they can sign even before we got to the agreement per se with with one of the providers. But we need to make sure that whatever people are going to to respond to this RFP understand that they cannot back up what like the Century Century did to us. Because now we we already know that land is sitting over there and and we already two two years with nothing.
All right, folks. I make a motion.
Back in.
Roll call vote.
So council member what?
Yes.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Taeda?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Heda.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Russell.
So we did vote on all the other items, correct, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes.
Correct.
Mr. City Attorney, York and St. Calgary?
Yes, I just have one item, number 26, about appointing city manager as the city's labor negotiator for the Dr. Nakagawa employment contract.
I move.
Okay, it's been seconded by council member Taeda. Please roll call vote.
Council member what?
Yes.
Council member Montero?
Yes.
Council member Taeda?
Yes.
Council member Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, so I'm going to request that we go ahead and move to the closed sessions right now. And then we'll we can do the elected officials' reports and recommendations towards the end. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the closed session, the first? Do we have the both closed sessions, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, you can combine them.
Are they contiguous?
Well, you can combine them if there's no comments about item number 29 or item number 30.
Are there any comments on item number 29 from the public?
No, we did not receive any comments.
On item number 30?
No, we did not receive any comments.
So we will combine them per our city attorney's recommendation. I will now, we'll give ourselves a two a couple of minutes for a quick restroom break. Is there anyone who, okay, I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We are in recess.
At the nation's doctor, I often get asked, what should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, I'm playing. Just because you're at home doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20 plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, president of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Yes, we have met in closed session on items number 29 and 30. And the city manager, the labor negotiator, has been advised.
Thank you. Elected officials' reports and recommendations. Mr. City Treasurer, David Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll keep this brief. I just want to thank the community for participating in the process, making your voices heard, letting us know what's important to you. That's how, you know, that's how we were able to do a good job for you by understanding what was important to the people, to the taxpayers, to the citizens, the constituents, and being able to serve you guys the best way that we can.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Clerk, Jimenez?
Yep, so I want to thank everyone for watching from home. I commend our neighbors for speaking up during public comments. I have updates on two main topics. So the first topic is the census. So I'm asking everyone watching, including individuals who feel our community members need more resources, please not only complete the census, but tell family and friends who live in Hawthorne to respond to the census. The more Hawthorne residents who respond to the census, the more federal funding that our city is going to receive for community resources. We're at 22 days from the deadline. Our response rate is currently at 64.4%, meaning that we're increasing at about 1% each week over the last month. Historically, the largest group of individuals who are not counted in the census are children. Therefore, last week, I was in contact with the superintendents from Hawthorne School District, Centinello Valley Union High School District, Wiseburn, and DaVinci. We provided them messaging in English and Spanish, and they're going to be personalizing the messaging for their communities and sending it to their students and parents. I also want to commend the over 20 volunteers who are out there getting our neighbors to complete the census during their own time and in this heat. Because as all y'all know, it's really, really hot out there. I truly appreciate them for being individuals who act to support our community, so thank you. If anyone wants to join our efforts towards improving our community, including our city hall staff, you can email me at pjimenez@cityofhawthorne.org. The second topic is regarding voting centers. I just want to update our community that we've been working with the county and community leaders to have a good number of voting centers around Hawthorne. I just want to update our community that we've been working with the county and community leaders to have a good number of voting centers around Hawthorne to ensure that voting in the upcoming election is a user-friendly process for our neighbors. As of now, we're looking to have between eight to ten voting centers in Hawthorne, which is an increase from five during the primary elections in March. So we definitely want to get, you know, as many voting centers in the area so it's as easy a process for our community as possible. And again, I want to thank everyone for watching the council meeting tonight. Stay safe out there, and we're going to get through this together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hadarawat?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank the community for coming out today and watching and voicing your concerns. I did speak to Vaughn today. So what's pretty cool is that the Channel Twenty-two and our Fine Arts Commission, they're moving forward with a art show, art class that they're going to be doing virtually. So I think that's pretty cool. And from that, the idea of painting a mural at Ramona Park, one of the parks that we're renovating, to have a mural painted on the backside of the wall curated by Dulce, who had the art galleries here and curated a lot of our other murals alongside with Daniela, who's on the Parks and Recs Commission. They're thinking about an Andy Warhol kind of theme to it, where it's twenty-six individual flowers painted, since the fence kind of cuts it up into twenty-four, twenty-six different segments. And then having the community come out and paint alongside with them, and that would be like the first show coming up. So I wanted to give Vaughn direction on, you know, going through the process of kind of getting that whole setup together with the Fine Arts Commission, Dulce, and, you know, get another mural painted there. I know we have one on the bathrooms on Ramona. So as we're renovating the whole part, I think it'll be kind of nice as we open it up, you'll have this new community-driven mural. I don't know if Vaughn's still on or not, but... You heard? Looking forward to that one.
He is. I don't think he is.
So I will request, and we'll see, you know, what we can do with it.
Right. The second was, so for the community fridge, I know we spoke about it today's afternoon. Getting some, I think, moving forward, especially how instrumental it is to kind of help the population here. And, you know, it was a community-driven initiative, and that's something we kind of want to cultivate and have flourish here in the city. So maybe I want to direct to the city attorney and our city manager and staff to look into creating or looking into a policy moving forward when it comes to having community fridges being implemented in. This way, we can kind of safeguard and make sure that not only is the city safe, but the establishment that's holding it is also safe. And then, you know, there's not another repeat of what happened a few days ago. I know it was taken out and then put back in rapidly. So just so that, you know, things that our community are pushing forward aren't kind of up in the air, I think it'd be good to have a policy written around it. Is that something we can move forward with? Eric, city manager?
So we can definitely research that and bring back a report for the council to consider.
Thank you. And then I think the last thing would be, so regarding a lot of the trash just on Hawthorne Boulevard and on the back ends of the parking, with a lot of those commercial sites, I remember we had some cleaning schedule, the cleaning schedule set up to counsel Olivia Valentine. But I don't know if it had enough teeth, or we had to take it back. Is there any kind of nuisance fine or fee that we have in our fee schedule to have the property owners themselves clean up their areas? Because in my head, it would become a nuisance, and it is a nuisance to have all that trash, especially in the back of the parking lots, not being picked up. And it kind of defeats the purpose of having us of the council having to go out there and address at the same time, having the residents have to look and go out there and clean up at the same time, when essentially, the business owners themselves should be taking care of the back parking lot and the front of their sidewalk. They own all of that, essentially. And it kind of does kind of help stimulate the economy as well, because it's very hard for patrons to want to partake in any kind of business we have here on the Boulevard when it's flooded with trash. So it's like a win-win. It won't be seen as anti-business, because actually, businesses alongside with them would actually be fighting for it, because they would actually gain an uptick in business because the streets start to look cleaner and better. So is there something like that in our books, or when it comes to enforcing that? City Attorney?
I have to research that. I just don't know.
Okay. If we could look into that and kind of take the, you know, having the business owners themselves kind of take more of a care and love for the city that they're doing business in to address that, I think then you'll see a lot of cleanup happening when they're going to be started citing for trash in their establishments. Could we do the same thing for like weed abatements and for weeds and that kind of sort of thing? So moving forward, this is kind of like under the same kind of process.
Yes.
And besides that, I hope everyone stays out safe and guess, welcome back to school.
Thank you, Councilmember Awad. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to Councilmember Mike together. We can't hear you.
His mood. I mute yourself, Mike.
We can't hear you.
You're on mute.
We can't hear you. You got to unmute yourself, please. Eric, can you unmute him? All right, let's go down. We're going to do Councilwoman Olivia Valentine?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, you're good? Okay, you're back? Okay. Thank you.
Well, I hope that, I know that homeless is such a tough subject, you know? And it's something that, you know, people want it, but they don't want it in their neighborhood. And, you know, there's all sorts of challenges with that. I give Jesse a lot of credit, because if you have to work in that environment with people that are, have the issues, the mental issues, and then the drug and alcohol issues, that's heartbreaking and it's tough, because you can't wish it. They need to want the help, and it's tough. So I'm glad that he's there, and I'm glad he's working on it. I know that everybody's concerned about that, you know? And I hope that we continue with, you know, trying to come up with programs and not give up on that, because it's too important. So I'm glad the conversation that we had tonight, and of course, you know, everybody wants it. So do we, and so do I. So I'm looking forward to that, that continuing in the homeless conference that we're having on the twenty-second. I hope to make that. The interesting, the new proposal would, you know, when Hawthorne comes up with programs that are innovative and makes us all proud, you know, because you hear a lot about the police and the police and the police, but we're doing some pretty cool stuff that not too many other police departments have. And so I'm particularly happy about that. I don't know if we can talk about all that right now, but it was an interesting conversation, you know? It was an interesting conversation. You know, that's it. Thank you for everybody for taking part in the meeting tonight. It was a spirited meeting, and I'm sure that's going to continue. So we're all being challenged. And that's it. That's it. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Olivia Valentine? Councilwoman, can you unmute yourself, too? Now it's your turn to unmute. Yes, there we go. Thank you, ma'am.
So the first thing I want to say is, again, thanks to Vaughn and to Jesse Ramirez, for their very comprehensive report on how we work on homeless issues. Very complicated problem with everyone having different issues. And it makes it very difficult to address them all, but I think we're meeting the challenge. We offer support services and resources if people want to be housed. And I, and our task force does a magnificent job, and I want to congratulate our task force and congratulate Vaughn Norris and Jesse Ramirez. In response to what Councilwoman Awad said about the cleaning schedule, I certainly hope it's being enforced. I initiated a cleaning ordinance a couple of years ago where we required that owners of commercial property clean their property on a regular basis and that they provide our code enforcement with a cleaning schedule. So I certainly hope it's being enforced. And I would like to also know from the city manager, if you could find out, please, is it being enforced? And what are the results? Because if it's being enforced, there shouldn't be trash in the commercial areas.
Yes, I'll look into that.
Thank you. And a word about nine eleven. So this Friday will commemorate the nineteenth anniversary of the terrorist attack on the World Trade Center. On that terrible day nineteen years ago, nineteen terrorists from Al Qaeda, an Islamist extremist group, hijacked four commercial airplanes, deliberately crashing two of the planes into the upper floors of the North and South Towers of the World Trade Center complex in New York and a third plane into the Pentagon in Arlington, Virginia. The Twin Towers ultimately collapsed because of the damage sustained from the impacts and the resulting fires. After learning about the other attacks, passengers on the fourth hijacked plane, Flight Ninety-three fought back, and the plane was crashed into an empty field in Western Pennsylvania about twenty minutes by air from Washington, D.C. The attacks killed two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven people from ninety-three nations. Two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three people were killed in New York. One hundred and eighty-four people were killed at the Pentagon, and forty people were killed on Flight Ninety-three. We must never forget. Traditionally, this city has recognized and honored the sacrifice of the first responders and the victims of nine eleven in a very solemn ceremony, and I will miss that. So I would like to say thank you to our own first responders, our police, and our firefighters who rushed to danger zones in times of panic and fear to help others without concern for their own safety, just like those brave firefighters in New York, where over three hundred of them died in New York, if we remember that terrible day. The nine eleven Memorial Museum in New York has been closed due to COVID-nineteen. It will open exclusively for nine eleven families on the nineteenth anniversary of nine eleven, which is Friday. It will reopen to the public five days a week, starting on September twelfth. It is a beautiful tribute to the juncture of grief, compassion, empathy, patriotism, and community that we all felt in the days and weeks after the nine eleven attacks. Would that we could recreate that feeling again? We were all together at that time. Thank you. That's all I have. Have a good week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor Protem, Alex Montego?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I hope everybody's doing well. I hope you guys had a very good Labor Day weekend, as we started with Labor Day. And I know there's a lot of, you know, smoke and fires out there, so we have to keep, you know, everybody's in our prayers, those families that are, you know, in the line of fires in this pandemic. So we just have to say a good prayer for all of them, make sure that they are healthy and safe out there. I wanted to maybe give Russell and Eric maybe a directive, maybe to give us an update about the sweeping, you know, the encampments and the homeless sweeping, because, you know, we received, I think, about twenty comments during the oil communication. So I think maybe we need to get some type of written communication from you guys to tell us what's going on. And specifically, because we know the Hawthorne PD did stop the sweep, you know, a few months ago. So I don't know if they have gone back to do sweep, and so we need to figure, you know, find out exactly what's going on. So maybe we can make some smart and compassionate decision, how we're doing over there on this, of this sweeping. And I know there is some, you know, some residents, you know, keep sending us message about the homeless, about the encampments, especially on Boja Park area. So we are up to date on what's going on. So that is where we have to coordinate service to figure out what we're going to do. We do all these encampment, like we said, if there is CDC and the state and the county moratorium on encampment, so we should follow those guidelines. Again, I want to say again, a dito to Vaughn and Jesse for keeping us up to date what's going on with the homeless in our community. So we know that, you know, the homeless have increased, like he said, by a hundred and five percent. So we definitely have to continue to provide service to our homeless population. And we have a good program going on in our cities, thanks to the homeless task force, the South Bay Co., the PAT. And so we're doing our best with Jesse and Samaga Center in Lenox to help everybody in our community. I want to congratulate the city clerk, Dr. Paul Jimenez, and his interns, because, you know, census is very important, and you guys have to take that to heart. So I appreciate it very much, you know, for you to reach out to all the school district and superintendent to make sure that, you know, we're going to have a good percentage in our count. Because like you said, you know, a lot of federal money depend on those census counts. So I'm glad to see that we have passed the sixty-four percent that we had in twenty-ten. So keep going, keep doing good jobs. So it's tremendous, but I'm hoping that we'll pass seventy percent in twenty-nine days, right? So keep doing that. Yeah, basically, you know, guys have a good week, and we are here to serve the people. And like I said, you know, we're all in the same pace here with the homeless and other issues that's come up, so we try to deal with it. And I'm glad to see that we're going to put the RFP out for the homeless, for the veterans' housing on Corderi. So because it's a need out there to make sure that we can house at least eighteen homeless or veterans that at least to be homeless in the near future. So continue to do a good job, and I look forward to seeing you guys next week. Take care. Good night.
Okay. Any go-bangs, Mr. Mayor Protem? You know how you do that all the time. You're good, though? Are you good? Okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so no, thank you, everybody, all my city council member colleagues for all their contributions today. Thank you to the residents for calling and sharing their concerns. So with regards to the community bridge, the Hawthorne Community Bridge, I think it's a noble and a very great community effort that they're putting together. So of course, I do concur with my council member colleagues that we need to have something in place to make sure that that doesn't happen again, what happened with the, with this fridge being taken offline. We need to encourage a lot of things like this, okay, from the community. Neighbors helping neighbors, so that's kind of what our motto says. So we need to encourage that as opposed to allowing for these things to happen. So I concur with my council member colleagues that we should just come up with a policy as well. With regards to our homeless task force, I think the city has, I strongly believe that the city has stepped up. Unlike neighboring cities who have not lifted a finger to be able to address the issue within their cities, actually, cities are looking at the city of Hawthorne as a model on which direction they should go with regards to addressing the homeless issue. Okay? So we need to be proud of that. Of course, there's always room for improvement. There's more things that we and everyone can do, or as a society, as a regional group, or as a city. Of course, there's always more that we can do. But we need to make sure that we highlight the things that we are doing, which are positive. And the city is doing something. And the city is doing something. And I also agree and concur with my council colleagues that we need to have some buy-in from the committee, because if they know exactly what we're doing, and they're hearing it, and they're contributing ideas, they'll be part of the solution as well. So that's, that's a commendable recommendation. With regards to the cleaning schedule that Councilwoman Olivia Valentine had implemented and brought forth two or three, four years ago, most likely. It was a while back. I am also, to some point, concerned with regards to that, because we need to make sure that these business owners are cleaning up their backyards. I mean, they're the back areas, the parking areas and in front, and that the accumulation of trash is not allowed. We have sent cleaning crews that belong to the city onto these private properties. And, but ultimately, it's these owners of these businesses that are ultimately responsible. So I've talked to the city manager, and he knows that we need to hold these business owners accountable, because I, there's nothing else I can say, but I think sometimes they're not acting as good partners here in the city if they're not going out there consistently and cleaning up. So we need to make sure that we hold them accountable. Those cleaning schedules are enforced, and I wanted to take, Mr. City Manager? I want to take it a step further. I want to see what these cleaning schedules are, so we can indeed, as a city council, together verify that this is taking place. So whatever's happening or has happened, or if we need to look, do this moving forward, let's determine what the, what you call it, the cleaning schedules are, what notifications are being sent out to these businesses. So, because we want to, we want to determine who's, you know, who's cooperating, who's not. Because it's unfair that any of my council colleagues here, any single one of the five of us are getting concerns from the community, and they might see something that's unclean, and they start comparing us to other cities. And we know Hawthorne is a great city, but we need to make sure that we reflect that all the time. So, Mr. City Manager, if you could just start, like, maybe assembling, you know, with the cleaning schedule, so that we can take a look and see what the enforcement has been? Can you take a look and see how you can do that? If you so decide, with the city attorney, please send that to us, if you so decide as a legal confidential, so that we can take a look at that, okay? So that we can examine, and, you know, we have to critique ourselves, and if we can't critique ourselves, we won't grow and we won't achieve our goals, right? So in particular, Mr. City Manager, there are a couple stores there that are in that little area. Dollar Tree, it doesn't have a tenant right now. I think it's shut down. So the fact that it doesn't have a tenant, the neighboring stores aren't necessarily taking the initiative to clean that little area for them. That's vacant, but there's a property owner. That property owner should be sending somebody out to make sure that thing is clean all the time, not weekly, because in a week, things can accumulate, right? We need to make sure that that's cleaned regularly, on a regular basis. So taking it a step further with regards to that, let's make sure that that's over and done with, and we don't have to worry about this anymore. Thank you. Is that okay, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, understood.
Okay, thank you. All right. So as you guys all know, that we had record heat these past couple days, two or three days. The highest that Southern California and our area has ever seen was in the county of Los Angeles. We reached a high temperature of one hundred and twenty-one degrees Celsius, or Fahrenheit, one hundred and twenty degrees Fahrenheit in Woodland Hills. So that's the highest we've ever seen. I was out in Corona with my brother, you know, visiting my brother, and it was about a hundred and eighteen degrees Fahrenheit. You know, so we were over here, we were like, what, a hundred and one or something? And as I was driving down the ninety-one freeway, see, I was at one hundred and one in Hawthorne. When I passed Downey, it was one hundred and eight, and when I got to Corona, it was a hundred and eighteen, okay? But the thing about what affected Hawthorne, it seemed like it was some type of, like, humidity going on in the air. So that caused a lot more strain to our, to our, to our residents, because...
Here, one minute, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yeah, sure. So, you know, that's why the ACs, the air conditioning units were going on. And so it basically took out some of our transformers within the city. So we all received messages from our community. We all stepped up, and we contacted Southern California Edison and made sure that our residents were taken care of and that these issues and that the power was restored as soon as possible. So this did happen around the city, and as you saw, Southern California Edison was very responsive to what had happened. I think we all, all five, all five of us got messages. So I commend my city council member colleagues for helping out, however everyone could, okay? Well, congratulations and kudos to all my colleagues. So I don't anticipate it being that hot anymore, but if it is, just take sure, make sure that you take precautionary measures. So that's it for me. You're right, Mr. City Clerk. It was about my time, so I think I made it under that time. So if there's no further comments from council members or staff, I'll declare the city, I'm going to close the session, we call it recess. I'll adjourn the city council meeting, okay?
Go Lakers.